All this meeting of November 23rd, 2021 to order. I see Mary Ann is here. Mary Ann's joining us via Zoom. First item on the agenda, we actually have three certificates of appreciation. It's been a busy couple of weeks with retirements and they've all been well attended, of course. The one for Bill Topham that I will read was announced on Veterans Day, but we had parties for the other two, which will be Ann McFate and Steve Popper, well attended, and our appreciation from the town. So with that, I will turn it over to Dan for the one for Ann McFate.
Sure. Ann McFate served an extraordinary 65 years at the Needham Public Library, the last 40 of them, am I correct as director?
Thirty.
Thirty, excuse me. How could I? During which time the library really made, you know, continued to be an excellent library, but made extended, you know, really extraordinary strides into the new century and expanding services and to express her work as ceaseless, as ceaseless dedication and leadership is entirely fair. And in recognition of 65 years of public service to the Needham Free Public Library, culminating in three decades as library director, your ceaseless dedication and leadership has left an indelible mark on the library, the town, and generations of residents. Congratulations, Ann, on your retirement.
Thank you, Dan, and that's made in form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Ann, second. Any discussion? Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Uh, Mary Ann, I don't know, these went out late. Did you have a chance to get them?
I do have them. Who would you like me to read, Steve?
Why don't you go with Steve Popper? All your work you've done with Steve, that would be very fitting.
I was sorry to miss his farewell party, but in recognition of 21 years of public service as Director of Building Design and Construction and member of the Permanent Public Building Committee, and your key role in the construction of over 27 new buildings, repairs, and renovations, congratulations on your retirement, Steve. What an amazing career he's had for his time with the town also.
Unbelievable. That's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Again, congratulations, Steve. Last one is for Bill Topham, and I'll read that. Master Sergeant Bill Topham, United States Marine Corps, retired. In recognition of over 10 years of service to the town of Needham as caretaker of veterans' graves and coordinator of ceremonies for Town Memorial Day and Veterans Day activities, and 27 years of active and reserve service as United States Marine to include combat tours in both Vietnam War and operations Desert Shield and Desert Storm, the town thanks you for your many years of dedication, commitment, and contributions to Needham, the United States of America. Congratulations, Bill. Is there a motion on that certificate?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations, Bill, and thank you. It's well deserved, all these three certificates of appreciation for all you've done for the town. First item on the agenda, moving to the public hearing, or second item I should say now, Eversource grant of location 3 Francis Street. Joanne Calendar, Eversource representative, coming to us via Zoom, and we'll bring her over.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Uh, barely. Let's see what, are you here with video or just audio, Joanne?
Just audio.
Okay, fine. So you're here on that grant of location for 3 Francis Street? If you could please, the floor is yours to describe what the application entails. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. So Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install 13 feet of conduit into Francis Street, and this will allow us to provide new underground service to the resident at 3 Francis Street. And I'm here to entertain any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
Great. Joanne, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience? I don't see anyone. Or via Zoom that wishes to comment on this application? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion?
Aye, removed.
Okay, moved. The board approved its time petition for Eversource Energy to install approximately 13 feet of conduit in Francis Street. Motion by Mr. Matthews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cooley, discussion.
Just wanted to ask the town manager, is everything in order with the application?
Everything's fine.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Calendar, that's all you have for the agenda tonight. Have a great night.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thanks, you too, happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, change of manager, Needham Golf Club, Jeffrey Pivop, proposed manager of the golf club, and he is coming to us also via Zoom as we bring him over.
All right.
How are you, Mr. Pivop? Is it Pivop, is that correct?
It's Paiva.
Paiva, okay. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. We are here on an application. There's been a change of manager at the Needham Golf Club, and if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and about this application for the board.
Sure, sure. So I'm applying as the change of manager here. I started here at the beginning of October. Previous clubs I've been at, Andover Country Club up in Andover, and also Lanham Club, which is also in Andover, and Ferncroft Country Club up in Middleton. So I've held liquor licenses at both Andover and Lanham Club. I was at Lanham Club for seven years, and I was at Andover Country Club for one year.
Great, thank you. And Kate, everything is in order on this application?
Yes, ma'am.
Terrific. Is there a motion before we move to discussion and public comment?
A move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience or via Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, seeing none, is there discussion among the board members? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Private Dan Matthews, one of the members. You've got a good background, and the application is all in order as far as I can see. I just want to stress, by taking this statutory manager's role, you've become personally liable for problems with liquor service at the club. You're in a residential neighborhood, it's been a great relationship, as far as I know, both ways, but we want the club to be a success, and it's a great contributor to the community, but it's important that you follow the laws and make sure that everything is operated as it's supposed to. And I know that's in your background, but I wanted to just repeat that since you're here this evening. Are we square on that?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, I appreciate the comment. My goal is to be, you know, to be a partner with the town. I do realize we're in a residential neighborhood, and it's incredibly important to follow those laws. I'll be developing relationships with the police and fire department so that we have no issues. Again, I've had these relationships in at my other clubs, so I'm well aware of how important and what an honor it is to hold a liquor license, so I would, you know, continue that here in Needham.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And Marcus has joined us. Hi, Marcus. Thank you, and I know the golf club is happy to find someone, I know it's difficult in this hiring environment to find a qualified manager, and from what I've heard, you are just that. So I wish you luck before we get to the vote in your new role. Best of luck. So are we have a motion and a second? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Marcus, I don't know if you were part of the discussion, if you wanted to abstain on, this is the liquor license hearing on the public hearing, change of manager for the golf club?
Yes, I will abstain.
Okay, great, I didn't want to, great. Thank you, congratulations. Good, best of luck.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thanks, happy Thanksgiving. Next item on the agenda, Director of Public Works, signed notice, traffic regulation, Chapel Street, Karis Lustig, Director of Public Works. How are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am here on behalf of another public works oriented project. This is an item that is being requested directly by the department and has not been run through the TMAC. Essentially, on this particular issue, we had a public official from another community drive through Needham and gave a call to our engineering department and indicated that they thought there should be a yield sign at Chapel at this intersection. And we went and sent our staff out there and said, yes, you are absolutely right, there should be a yield sign at this intersection. Everybody, luckily, they utilize that, that turn that way, but there should be officially a sign there. So this is to officially recognize that there should be a yield sign at this location and to install it there.
Now, is this public official looking for a job in the town of Needham? That was very astute by that, and it was nice for the town to go out and confirm that. So that is, that is great. Is there a motion on this application?
A move approval of the suggested motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second. A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion on this application? No, hearing and seeing none, yes, question?
As far as being a yield sign and not a stop sign, what was the distinguished difference, or why it shouldn't be a stop sign instead of a yield? Just wanted to know.
So because you're making a right-hand turn, it's safe to yield as opposed to stop? If you were making a left-hand turn or you had other turning movements, that's when you would need to come to a full stop before you go. And like I said, right now, there's nothing there, and people are proceeding as if there's a yield sign.
Understandable, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
If I correct, if you're coming down Chapel Street going towards the Emory Grover Building, this is the little thing that looks like the making a U-turn around the island at the gas station. And so if there's no traffic coming the other way, you're free, you can see that and you're free to go, but you're not supposed to cut in front of them if there's traffic coming through the light.
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, makes sense to me.
Great. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
If I correct, if you're coming down Chapel Street going towards the Emory Grover Building, this is the little thing that looks like the making a U-turn around the island at the gas station. And so if there's no traffic coming the other way, you're free, you can see that and you're free to go, but you're not supposed to cut in front of them if there's traffic coming through the light.
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, makes sense to me.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Karis, thanks for coming in for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Karis.
Next item on the agenda, League of Women Voters Study of Needham's Elected Town Boards and Officers. Carol Paddy, Karen Price, come on up, please.
Do you want to go up?
That's right in front of me, it's fine, I can't.
She can see us.
Yeah, that's what matters.
The microphone's the most important. Yes, I can see, thank you, I appreciate that very much. So you're in front of us tonight, you did a very comprehensive study, and I know that you have some, a slide deck that we have, and as I speak, we'll get that up for you. So if you'd like to walk us through your study, and then we'll have discussion and questions. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Carol?
Thank you for this opportunity to present the research and outcomes of the League of Women Voters of Needham's Study of Needham's Elected Boards and Offices. We are using board tonight to refer to the town, to the 10 elected boards, and office or officer to refer to the elected officers, the three of them. One of the league goals is to influence public policy through education and advocacy. We identify positions through league studies, which usually take one to two years to complete, and include these steps: identifying an area to study, defining the scope, approving it by the membership, forming a committee to research and report, then we reach consensus on key questions. We prepare a position statement based on that consensus, and then we approve by vote of the membership and advocate for those positions. So part of our job tonight is to advocate for those positions that we've taken. The scope of this study was to educate ourselves about and objectively assess Needham's elected boards and offices, and recommended changes if warranted. It was an overall look at all the elected boards and officers, not aimed at individuals, and was really targeted towards long-range changes. We did the work from September 2020 through June 2021. We had 12 team members very actively involved with the study, it was wonderful to see. During, oh, okay. I'm going to take, take, I'm going to talk about our research phase. So during the six-month research phase, we reviewed the websites from Needham and similar towns regarding running for office and contact information. We interviewed all four elected officers and 41 of the 49 board members in town from the 10 elected boards. We analyzed ballots from 1990 to 2021, which is 32 years. We compared Needham to other towns, we did three more interviews with former officials in other towns, and we reviewed state law, the Needham Charter, and bylaws. Next slide. Our interviews were conducted with members of the board prior to April 13th, 2021 election, and most were completed prior to the election. We contacted all 53, and we were pretty pleased that we had, we were able to do 45 of those. People were generally very willing to participate. Two league members conducted each interview and completed a response form that kept names confidential, and her interviews covered demographics, self-reported experience and expertise needed, time commitment, term serve, the need for term limits, recruiting or attracting candidates, diversifying their board, appointing versus electing members, and improving effectiveness and efficiency. So to assess general interest in running for town boards and offices over time, we obtained candidate information from our own voter guides from 1990 to 2021 for 31 years. Then we added 20, April, after April 2021, we added that last year. The blue line is the number of open seats on the ballot, usually around 15 to 20 for each election. And the red line is the number of candidates who ran for those seats. So if there's space between the two lines, that reflects contested races. The graph shows a general decline in contested races over time, and please note that we are not saying this is bad or good, we're just making observations at this point. Next. So we created two graphs for each board and office, so we have 13 times two. Here is an example of one of the graphs for select board, thought you might be interested in that one. It shows the number of openings each year in blue and the number of candidates in red. A second type of graph in our report, but not shown here, gets to board turnover or stability. And so we have these two graphs for all 13 boards and offices, which gave us a general information on interest in elections. Again, just an observation. Next. Another part of our research was to look at 16 similar towns. They were chosen for proximity to Needham and population. We mostly used websites to obtain information, but also phone calls and personal contacts if the websites didn't tell us. Next. We reviewed the Needham Town Charter and bylaws and relevant mass general laws to understand specific requirements for the various elected boards and officers. We determined whether the boards could be appointed, and if so, what would need to make that change. We determined that the select board must be elected, as we know. School committee and housing authority require a special act of the legislature to change, and for others, it appeared to us that changes to our bylaws and/or charter, a town meeting vote, and approval of the voters were needed to make a change. Of course, these findings would all need to be verified. We completed the bulk of our research through February 2021, just nine months ago, and in that time, actually quite a bit has happened. Due to time constraints to complete the study, we could not continue to do interviews with new board members after the town election. But in just those nine months, all of these things happened that might have affected some of our outcomes, such as the April election, vacancies, the Nwari statements, the census updated all the population, and we know that the website designs aren't going. So now Carol's going to talk about our consensus of positions. So these are our summary positions here, and we're going to discuss each of them in detail as we go through these next several slides. The first set of positions relate generally to communication. We support using the town website and resources to help interested town residents with volunteering on a town board, running for an elected position, making board meetings more accessible to board members and residents, and providing a means to contact local elected officials and town meeting members other than just mailing addresses. The second set really relates to appointing rather than electing some offices and boards. So we support appointing rather than electing the town clerk, the constables, the board of assessors, trustees of Memorial Park, and commissioners of trust funds. And then we support the town undertaking a full review of all the elected officers and elected and appointed, and appointed boards. So first, we'll talk about available information regarding running for office. We reviewed the information that's available for running for office on the website. While it lists all boards, it does not separate elected boards from the rest, and has almost no information on running for one of the three offices. We identified a single point of entry on the website for residents interested in getting involved in town government as a helpful step. We recognize efforts are underway to better describe elected and appointed boards right now. During the election period, from January through April, there is no information available on the website on the, who has taken out nomination papers for a town election, who has taken out and returned papers for a town election, and who the final candidates are. A potential candidate needs to make multiple trips or calls to Town Hall to find out who else is running, and until the specimen ballot is posted, there's no announcement of the candidates who have qualified. Several towns do have spreadsheets posted with this information on their websites. All of these suggestions make running for office more inclusive for those who are not in the know. Then we make some observations about elected boards' composition. So the slide on page five in your packet reflects the board composition as of March 1st. At that time, the percentage of white board members was 96%. After the April election and a recent vacancy, the current percentage is 92% white. We note that in the most recent census, 82% reported their race as white alone. The average age was 62, and men outnumbered women nearly two to one, with three boards having no women members. Needham is becoming more racially diverse. Suffice to say, however, our boards tend to be more white, older, and male than the To help diversify the town elected boards, we have two positions related to board composition. So one is to support the town ensuring that openings in town offices that will be on an upcoming ballot are widely publicized, including to organizations involving people of diverse age, race, gender, and socioeconomic status. And the second is to support encouraging boards to consider ways to involve additional residents in order to develop a pipeline for future board membership. Whether the elected board should have term limits was not part of our league consensus questions because the League of Women Voters of the United States has a position against term limits at all levels of government. Since we know the select board has discussed term limits in the past, we asked in our interviews whether board members would be in favor of term limits for their boards, and if there were term limits, what should that limit be? For board members currently in office, 11 were in favor and 27 were against, with three having no appointment, no opinion. Certain boards had more interest in having term limits than others, including the school committee, the select board, and the library trustees. We also focused on elected boards' use of remote meeting options. So with regard to meetings of town boards, we supported allowing board members to join an in-person meeting or hearing remotely and fully participate in the discussion and voting. And secondly, making all board meetings and hearings available on cable TV via videoconferencing or other platforms in real time for the public to observe, and making video recordings of all board meetings or hearings be available for viewing afterward. We did not support remote-only meetings and hearings. As we discussed these positions, we talked about how these steps have and continue to open uptown government to a wider array of residents, particularly those who are less able to get out to observe or testify at meetings and hearings in the evening. This also enables people to feel more comfortable with their ability to get up to speed on issues and advocate for change, which then can lead to greater involvement in town government. We also looked at what information was available and how to contact elected officials. Various boards had different kinds of information on how to contact them. We detailed these on page 11 of the packet that you have. We feel it's important to ensure that those people interested in communicating with town officials can do so expeditiously. Providing either email addresses or phone numbers would be important. We also would extend this to town meeting members. The league recently completed a survey to town meeting members about communication, and we're in the process of analyzing that and summarizing the results. Stay tuned for that. Okay, I'm going to talk about appointing officers and boards rather than electing. So after research, discussion, and consensus, our position is to appoint rather than elect the following: town clerk, appointed by the town manager. None of the others have any specific recommendation about who makes the appointment. Constables, board of assessors, trustees of Memorial Park, commissioners of trust funds. We did not support appointing other elected boards. We considered just these nine boards. We did not consider moderator, select board, school committee, or housing authority, board of commissioners. Excellent. So why might we appoint rather than elect? Reducing the number of candidates on the ballot can focus attention on the boards that set policy and establish goals in areas that impact most of all of our residents. Positions are often uncontested, even when there is no incumbent running, and sometimes there is no candidate. In our interviews, we spoke to several people who were originally appointed. They told us that they probably would not have run initially in an election. They were more familiar with an appointment process rather than election, and more willing to do that. Excellent. So on page 12, table 6.1, we're, is a list of the towns that we use to compare ourselves to, again, based on proximity to Needham and a little bit on population. We took out the two smallest towns from that group. We took the nine boards and offices we studied and looked at whether they were appointed or elected in the 16 other towns. The totals are shown here, the individual towns are in, are on page 12. We can see from this table that appointments are a viable option that other towns have turned to. We also see that you're, as you already know, every town is different. Next. So we're going to start with town clerk. I do want to make the point that our position is not a reflection of our current town clerk or the dedicated service she has given and continues to give the town. The role of town clerk is constantly expanding, from someone in the past who kept paper records to one who must deal with complex computer-based records and reporting systems, and communication through multiple electronic resources. Roles and duties are constantly being added to the town clerk's, clerk's plate, most recently, early voting and early voting by mail. As an elected officer, the town clerk is not really supervised as other department heads are. Table 6.1 on page 12 shows that five of the 17 town clerks in the similar town-
Table 6.1 on page 12 shows that five of the 17 town clerks in the similar towns are appointed. But table A1, two pages later, looks at all of the towns in Massachusetts with a population greater than 25,000, so the largest towns in the state, based on the 2019 census estimates. Now, almost half of these towns have appointed town clerks, and the cities that call themselves towns have appointed town clerks. If the town clerk was appointed by the town manager, as well as are all other department heads, the town clerk would be selected based on experience and skills after a search and interview process and would be subject to performance reviews and oversight. The electorate is simply not qualified or in a position to do this. Next. Constables are appointed in most towns we consider. They perform an administrative quasi-law enforcement role that only a handful of Needham residents are aware of or ever encounter. They rarely come into contact with constituents, and we could not come up with a reason to elect them. In the 16 regional towns, 10 appoint, 3 elect, 1 does both, 2 and 2, and 2 were unknown. We appreciate the constables who spoke to us because we couldn't find out anywhere else what they did, but they told us. Next. Board of assessors. Although the board of assessors has a role in appointing or denying applications for abatement, this can be done by qualified and vetted appointed members. The newest member of this board was elected to a townwide position with 233 write-in votes, 4% of voters garnered through a Facebook post and an email announcement the day before the election. Interviewing an appointed interested candidates would be our preferred way to get new members. No member of the board of trustees of the Memorial Park responded to our request for an interview. One was eventually interviewed after multiple attempts. We found no similar boards in our area. The chair of the select board is a member of this board by virtue of position, and those we interviewed agreed that this board could be appointed. The requirement that three members must be veterans, while perhaps appropriate, may not be sustainable due to the diminishing number of veterans who live in Needham who are willing to run for an elected office. Next. The commissioner of trust funds, this three-person board, performs an administrative task described as a governance mechanism by one of its members. It does not set policy, does not have a role in overall town government. Among the 17 towns, we found only four, which includes Needham, that elected a board to fill this role. The current three-person board includes two members who were appointed after vacancies and went through an application process that included an interview and assessment of qualifications. The most recent appointee was chosen from six applicants, yet rarely is there a contested race for this position. Two of the current board members agreed that the interviews could be done, would be reasonable to appoint. Carol?
So as a result of our study, we realized that there are many areas we could have studied where change could make our town government more effective overall. 2005 was the last formal review, but it focused primarily on town manager and its impacts. The League did not evaluate whether the function of the current boards are still needed, nor the number of members and length of terms. And we did not consider appointed boards. There are at least 30 appointed boards, all requiring staff time, oversight, and communication. Areas to consider are manner of selection, current relevance of the mission, role composition, the need for new boards, term limits, and rules governing rotation of chairs. So thank you for this opportunity to discuss the results of our study with you. We'd love to be involved in any efforts the town might make toward decisions on the future of boards and offices.
Great. Thank you so much for this comprehensive report. When I received it, I was looking at a couple of charts and was thinking it's just a terrific summary of what's appointed and what's elected and what responsibilities are. A lot of them, you know, people do not know, so I just think it's a great snapshot in a lot of work. Well, you know more than we do how much work went into this. Before I turn over to the board, just a couple of questions, because there's a lot here, and this is really just setting the table how we're going to move forward or what we decide to do as a board and as a town. The suggestions for candidates and getting that information on the website or maybe making that more accessible, has that been discussed yet with the town clerk and any type of discussion?
We did, we discussed it really with the public information officer, and I think there is some effort toward that going on, but the extent to which that's going...
Sure, because I know, you know, things can look terrific and easy, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We do implement, because it does seem a lot of pretty common sense or a pretty way to make it more transparent. Number two, I will just say, trying to get people to these appointed committees, it's difficult to get candidates, so I like your idea. We've discussed it about getting it in front of as many eyes and groups as possible. And then just thirdly, you know, we can have a discussion for a long time in the future about who should be appointed, who should be elected. You know, I don't necessarily agree with some of your recommendations as far as the town clerk and others, but I do think that when you look at one of the charts saying about kind of how long someone's been in a position, you can look at certain, right here, table 4.1, and I know it's really talking about the composition and the years on the board average, and maybe, you know, about term limits possibly, or, you know, people with institutional knowledge. But what I also gleaned from it is if you look at certain things such as the assessors, it's a very low number, as well as the housing authority as far as years on board average range, and maybe it's something to think about. Why is it so low? Why is there such turnover? And maybe something like the assessors, you can say, okay, as you said, there was an opening, there were for a write-in candidate, and maybe that would be, it's a charter change, I mean, a bylaw change, as well as constable, so maybe those would be something that would be kind of easier to do than others. But, you know, you look at a table, and that did, you know, along with some of the average ages, but the lower ages said, wait, what's going on there where there's such a turnover? And maybe also it's the term that could be the issue. So I think a lot of terrific information here, something that we're going to discuss at length, I think, as we move forward, but thank you for compiling this and giving us a starting point. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Mathieu, Marcus?
If Mark wants to go first.
Yep. Good.
Thank you both for being here. Truly appreciate all the work that you put into doing this. Question about the conversation of how you left it with our PIO. Where did it seem like it was heading as far as what is going on? Is there follow-up about kind of deep diving into exactly what you would like to see done as far as information on the website and using those resources to help better our transparency and communication?
So the town meeting member question, that's actually part of our survey about willingness or is there a desire to have that kind of information there? So there is some work underway to kind of get to that more, and I think she is waiting some for that, but she also has the ability to do some polls, and so there could be, you know, another aspect of that is how much does the public know about who their town meeting members are and how to reach them? And so that could benefit from one of those polls. Anything to add?
Yeah, you're talking about our meeting with Cindy Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yeah, so we went over our positions with her, and she was enthusiastic about doing whatever could be done to make these things happen. You know, I certainly don't think changing the website and all that is an easy process.
Correct.
It's a long-term process, but I know that it started, I've seen some of the, it looks like a template has been started for describing boards and starting to be filled in, I noticed that. And, you know, I'm sure it's an ongoing process, and it involves the boards, I'm sure, contributing and trying to herd everybody together.
Absolutely.
But I feel fairly confident that we're on our way there. I'm not so sure about the election-related information. I don't know where that's, I'm not, Cindy, I think, was going to speak with the town clerk, but I'm not sure.
Kate?
Cindy did hold a communications forum, public forum with the town clerk, and so they got some feedback, and they're working together on proposals.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcus. Dan?
Yeah, this is an excellent study. And before I even get to the study, I watched the candidate night the other night, and I just wanted to say thanks, and I know it's not easy to do that stuff.
Ah, Jim.
No, but in terms of the organization, in terms of, it was structured in a way to be, you know, a timely kind of program that kept moving at the right pace. People had a fair opportunity to answer the questions. The questions were excellent. The candidates had a good opportunity to give a good account of themselves. The technology held up. I really just thank you. It's a real public service.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. This is a very helpful study, and I want to, maybe if I sound like I'm criticizing some things because it's mainly focusing on a couple of things. I completely agree with the idea of getting current information on the web about candidacies for office, who's pulled papers and who's returned them and who's qualified for the ballot, because it's the kind of, if nothing else, it would actually reduce the amount of time that people at the clerk's office spend answering the phone to citizens, inquiring minds that want to know. So the main thing about the website is we had, and maybe Cindy or whoever's working on this will, if you've got to have data that, sometimes you can't have stale data floating around on the site. And I've had the bad experience of trying to look up who's on this committee or that that I want to work with, and say, wait a minute, that's not right. I know that so-and-so was left quite a while ago. So we need to be careful that whatever we do, it's, but that's good. One thing I'm a little hesitant about, and maybe this engages with a couple of issues, is I think you need to have point of contact. So if somebody wants to ask a question about what the board's position is about this or that, or give information to the board about how they feel a particular issue, there ought to be a point of contact, and it's good that it would be similarly formatted for every one of the boards and committees, so people could do that. I'm very hesitant about publishing individual email addresses for individual volunteer public policymakers, which is pretty much how you describe all of these board and committee members. Even the ones that have a salary are basically nominal. And this does go to the whole business of why people don't want to run for election or something, and this charged times. We had, I think we had to find the way, and this wasn't called out in the report, and maybe I should have filled out my survey more carefully, but we had to find the way to balance the right of the public to have a say and communicate with their elected officials, to the right of these volunteers to have privacy and some boundaries about the amount of, you know, either things they're not interested in getting or things that are just outright spam, they shouldn't have to deal with that. A point of contact for each board probably would make a lot of sense, and I know on the town meeting piece that that's something that the town clerk has done some pretty sensitive, I think, very, kind of tried to find some good balances, because there are some members that say, you know, bring it on, I want to talk to everybody all the time. That isn't everybody that way, though, and those people need to be included, too.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure exactly how we worded it, but I think what we want is for people to be able to be reached by email, not necessarily to post their email.
Okay. That's good. The recommendations about, your recommendations for some specific boards and off, I completely agree with exactly what you've recommended. And we'll just say, I think there is going to be a role for the League going forward in that, because this board has got your recommend, looking at and determining if we are going to make some recommendations for action based on your recommendations is one of our goals for the year. And these, looking at these issues is important, and it also, if this board goes off and does it on its own, usually somebody says the select board is grabbing power again. I mean, we specifically took making the board of assessors appointed to town meeting, I don't know, 15 years ago or something like that.
It's more than that.
And at that point, we had appointees on the assessors who had been specifically, I had to tell these old stories sometimes. Specifically appointed on the condition that they were going to support, they understood that we were switching over and it was going to, we were going to town meeting, they asked to have it made. Those individuals got up at town meeting and opposed to conversion. And so I think one thing that has to happen when we're doing this is not take these up as a group, but take them up one at a time, and at every time that we're taking one of these up to talk about, that we invite the current incumbents in those positions to be in the room and hear and see what we're talking about and participate in that. Hopefully, we can come to some agreement. I, you know, our town clerk is outstanding and beloved and elected, and it's time to change that office at such a time as, and whenever she, our current clerk decides to transition out of that office would be a good time to be in position to make this an appointed office. And that is, we need to talk very, as they say, planfully about that because there are strong feelings around it. And I'm speaking a certain way as if it's obvious. That's not how everybody else...
You're speaking as one member, Mr. Mathieu.
That is exactly right. I am speaking as one member, and I know that not all members agree. I would flag a little bit the trustees of Memorial Park as a case that needs careful discussion and consideration. It isn't just about recommend, you know, we had an excellent Veterans Day observance, and these things are important, and it's a great location and important to the town. But the statute that they operate under is different than the other statutes of local boards and commissions, and it was written in 1919 for times that were much different in many ways in terms of the informality that was allowed in town government process, no open meeting law, no public records law, people could just, the gentlemen, because women couldn't even vote then, just settled things up when they had a disagreement. They didn't need the detail of the system to fit together perfectly. Now, Memorial Park isn't, in addition to being our soldiers and sailors memorial, it is a core facility for the athletic program of the town. It is required to be considered part of the high school for every thing that we need to deal with, the state getting state approvals or permitting for, including the renovation that we did a number of years ago. We've got a new facility that we constructed there that hopefully will give us good service, but it was not meant for the days when, as somebody said one time, the easiest way to find out who had a key to the old building was just to find out if there was anyone in Needham who didn't have a key to it. So we have different kinds of requirements, but at the same time, we've got five dedicated people serving on that board and our chairman serving ex officio. We need to talk through carefully to make sure that everybody feels change is fair, and then we have to process it all the way through town meeting to a special act of the legislature. So there's a lot of work there. I think it's, you know, it's an excellent piece of work, your whole study, and points us in the right direction, and I look forward to having the League participate in helping us move forward.
And our message is to start the conversation.
Thank you. Yes, which you've done a great job doing, and I agree with Dan, just the point of take these one at a time, listen to the public, and come with recommendations. I know Marcus has a comment, but Mary Ann, I didn't go to you yet, do you have any comments?
I also just want to weigh in and say thank you for the work. I do agree with the vast majority of the recommendations that are here, and I also hear and understand and appreciate Dan's cautions about timing and acceptance of change and what it takes to make change. So all of those things are important. I particularly appreciated sort of the last summary that I think it was Carol presented that got to elements when we looked at all appointed boards, for example, going as far as thinking about term limits and thinking about rotation of chairs. That is something that we've been talking about on various appointed boards. So I think it's just good governance, and I appreciate the League's raising these issues, again, as a matter of concern for us as we're working through all the committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Marcus?
Yeah, and I just wanted to go back to how you ended it about what you were kind of recommending, a full review and what it could be, including and not limited to. I think all the things that you listed there are some things that definitely need consideration and to be looked at, and something that I feel that we will and we should talk about. And I'm just really appreciative of the work that you've all done and where it's led us to and opened up this discussion and kind of where it goes from here and how we blossom that and do better, because we can.
Right. Thank you, Marcus, and just echoing the comments of the board, thank you again. I don't know how many times we can thank you in one night. We do have Thanksgiving coming up, so a lot of thanks going around this week. But the start of a conversation, I think you've said it the best, Karen, and now we'll move forward and see what makes sense for the town. So take care.
Thanks, Mark.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, next item on the agenda, ARPA economic development proposals. Katie King, Amy Holson. It's Halson, isn't it?
Hailson.
Hailson.
Close enough.
Thank you. One for three. Exactly. Welcome, and thank you. Before I begin, the governor visited the town of Needham to discuss some economic excitement and, you know, the merchants and shop in Needham and shop local, and Amy, thanks for all your work, and Katie, and Kate, and staff for everything you've done. We talked a lot about pop-up shops and different things we're trying to do, and they were amazed, actually. I was speaking with Lieutenant Governor Palito, and she said your storefronts look really good for a lot of towns that they've toured, so, you know, a lot of credit goes to you, so thank you. So with that, we're here to discuss business and ARPA.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it right over to Amy, this is all her work.
Sure, well, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this really important subject. So it goes without saying that the business community has suffered immeasurably during the pandemic, and the ARPA funding is a way that we can make an impact on the financial losses that they have had. So I put together, which you have seen, the ARPA funding recommendations for economic development, specifically starting out with grants for small businesses. They would be used to help mitigate any financial hardship resulting from the public health emergency, such as decline in revenues or impacts of periods of business closure. The program would provide small business owners grants up to $10,000, depending on their size, to use in one of the following ways. So the first would be a job incentive program, which would help businesses of all types with their ongoing challenges with staffing issues. I am out meeting with businesses all the time, and I'm hearing from retailers, from service businesses, from restaurants particularly, that they are just continuing to feel very short-staffed, and in many cases, they have to change their hours of operation due to the staffing shortage, may not be able to be open for lunch, for example, because they don't, just don't have enough staff to be able to serve the customers. So the job incentive program would allow cash bonuses to help fill vacant jobs, but also be used to help reward the employees that have been loyal throughout the pandemic. And I felt as though that was pretty important in going out and having conversations with the businesses themselves and heard from them, you know, it's great to be able to have a carrot to bring in new employees, but we've had some loyal employees that have stuck with us throughout this pandemic, and we feel as though they should be rewarded as well. So that's, that's an important piece of this. It's also important to say that employees do not need to be in Needham residence, but the employers must have a physical brick and mortar location in Needham. The next one is COVID prevention, so funds to help cover the cost of PPE, costs related to adopting safer operating procedures to prevent the spread of COVID, whether it's social distancing measures, outdoor dining. The restaurants have spent an inordinate amount of resources to create these outdoor dining areas, and those costs will continue. For example, propane gas. I spoke to one restaurant owner just last week who said he's spending up to $450 a week on propane just to heat the outside heaters. So that's pretty extraordinary. On top of that, digital adaptation, so businesses interested in whether updating, you know, upgrading their website to allow for online sales or bringing in QR codes for ordering, encouraging touchless transactions, those types of things. And then overall operating costs, allowing businesses to use the funding to offset payroll and benefit costs, expenses to retaining or hiring, training employees, as well as for mortgage, rent, utilities, and inventory. So I think the ability to be able to distribute these funds sooner than later to these small businesses, you know, most of them are in the midst of, you know, a busy time of year now through the end of the year will be solid, but as we get into the first quarter, that's when things come to a screeching halt for many of the businesses. As the weather is getting colder, I'm hearing from the restaurants that the numbers are down as far as people wanting to dine in. Obviously, outdoor dining is coming to a close for many of the restaurants very quickly. So the ability to be able to distribute these funds to allow them to anticipate expenses in 2022 would be extremely helpful. And then beyond the support for small businesses, in addition, I had put forth a proposal for funding for public art, specifically for two murals. As you may know, I staff the Needham Council for Arts and Culture, which is just a dynamic group of individuals with just tremendous creativity and the ability to pull together resources to move forward public art initiatives. And one of the initiatives that they are looking at is to be able to put together some murals in two locations. So they've had conversations, these are privately owned locations, both actually on Highland Avenue, so they're in conversations with the landlords that have been very positive. And so the expense to put together a mural, to be able to enlist artists who have been underemployed throughout the pandemic, certainly, this would go a long way to make those happen. So we're not talking about a mural necessarily like the rail trail where it was a community art project where we had kids come together. This would be, this would employ professional artists to be able to, you know, materialize and put together the concepts for this, which of course would be vetted through the proper channels to get support for that.
Great.
So the total funding request for the small business program is $300,000, and for public art is $20,000, for a total funding request of $320,000.
Great. Yes, Katie?
Just to add one comment, that Amy did have a few more brainstorms around a couple of other economic development initiatives. We're still processing them and vetting them relative to the ARPA rules.
Okay.
So I'm just putting it on the radar that we might be back with a few more.
Terrific. Great. And I remember during the pandemic, we were hoping to see if there was a way to get money back to businesses, and luckily, we have a channel to do that. If you could just quickly, kind of logistically, walk through how it works. So a business would apply, I see the criteria, which is great, they provide their materials, and then just as far as like a turnaround time, and then.
Sure.
Is there going to, you think there's going to be competition? I know you said you're going to give priority to people who didn't get CARES Act, but do you anticipate somewhat of a competition for those funds, or, I'm just trying to figure out logistically how that, that would play out.
Yeah, there may in fact be some competition, but the hope is that the pool is large enough so that we can make, you know, certainly a very large impact on a number of small businesses. There are several restaurants, for example, that applied for the Restaurant Revitalization funding that ran out very, very quickly, that hasn't moved through Congress as far as getting additional funds for that. But one of the questions on the application would be, what kind of funding have you received with CARES Act? Have you received, you know, a PPP loan that was forgiven, those types of things? So there would be a way that we would sort of weigh those types of things when making the decisions, but the ultimate goal is to be able to help as many businesses as possible.
Great. And you anticipate the turn, like, we would open this, let's say, in December, is that where, and then turn around to a shift?
The tentative schedule would be to release this in early January.
Okay.
And allow businesses probably four weeks to be able to submit their application, and then to be able to make decisions by mid-February.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, could I just add?
Yes.
I think the goal is as quickly as possible, but I think the month of December is probably the biggest month for, we don't want to take the attention away from the shop owners and restaurants who are.
Yes.
Yes.
Who have, who have not gone on.
And the other piece that I just wanted to note, and I think Amy touched on it, is that the grant recipients would have to certify that they had suffered an economic loss. Now, we know they can, but those are the kinds of things that would be on the application form that Amy and Katie are working with town council on.
Great. Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Marcus?
Thank you both, and thank you so much, Amy. So as far as that turnaround and getting it back, giving the businesses a month to get everything done, and then in February, kind of having a decision, how soon thereafter will they be able to have the monies allocated or use that?
So if they're given four weeks to apply, the goal would be to turn around decisions within two weeks, so to have them all in one pool, to be able to look at all of the applicants at one time. And then we've actually met with the finance director, Dave, and he said that they can actually cut those checks pretty quickly, so a matter of like 15 business days.
Okay.
So the idea would be by early March that the funds would be in the hands of the small businesses.
And then, oh, yes.
I just made one point, that it'd be on reimbursement basis, so it would be, you know, also dependent on when the businesses go out and, you know, buy new furniture or when they onboard new staff for the job incentive program. So it would vary.
Okay.
But once the money's spent on there and they give us the proof of purchase.
Proof of receipts.
Then we could reimburse them quickly, yeah.
All right. And then as far as the murals, and $10,000 apiece, and then how many artists might that encompass per mural? And then what is the process of choosing that artist and, or those artists?
Sure. So each mural could employ, you know, up to a handful of artists, and the process for that would be that the Needham Council for Arts and Culture would put sort of a, you know, a call for artists to have them apply, and then they would interview them and vet them, and then would come forth and, you know, share those ideas with the select board and other town leadership to get their support and their buy-in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And just on that art request, you know, I think two murals are great, but the more we can do, the better, so I know there'll be other projects, even at a smaller scale. I would love to see that public art increased as we go along, because I love the idea of public art in Needham, and, you know, I'd like to spread it out among, you know, areas of town, but I think it's a great idea. Discussion?
I'm ready to put motion.
Oh, I see, Mary Ann? Mary Ann?
So I just wanted to say thank you, and I know that the Needham Council for Arts and Culture is very much looking forward to these new grant funds that they can have access to and to putting out a call for artists in town. I agree, Matt, certainly, public art has long been a priority, so I'm delighted to see that we can do this. And I appreciated understanding the turnaround time, because I do think, you know, the more quickly that we can get these funds into the hands of our businesses, the better. I appreciate the waiting in December, but I think the sooner we can let people know what the ground rules are going to be, I think the better. So I think there could be good reason for releasing the information sooner rather than later. The last thing that I was thinking, when I looked at the criteria, at least that was in what we got for COVID prevention, I do hope that in our specs, that we are clear that if it can assist in ventilation in indoor spaces, I think that is a very valid use going forward of these funds. I don't know what the state of a number of our businesses are from a ventilation perspective, so if that is something that we can be helpful on, maybe that's one of the areas as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Mary Ann. And just to comment as well, as far as notice is concerned, and I know you'll be sending out letters, right, to business owners and just letting them, I had a discussion, I think last week, about potential ARPA funds, and the gentleman was like, I don't think my, I don't think this will apply what I'm trying to do, and I think it will apply. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, you have a nice list of what can, what it can be used for, and communication to them would be, and I know you're going to, but just that that would be a nice kickoff, and I agree with that, the earlier the better, so they can plan. You would hate that, and I'm not talking about putting the application in, but you would hate them to buy something, you know, that too soon, or, you know, and then not be able to get reimbursed, so. I think that would be noticed, yes.
We did propose to bring this to you December 14th meeting, but if the board is inclined to support it tonight, that might give us.
That would be, and I was looking at that, and I know Dan was chomping at the bit to make this motion, and I think, based on the discussion of this group, I think we're ready to vote this, to move it ahead.
Yeah. It makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the work that you've put into this. Yeah, let's get going.
Right.
I'd offer the motion that the board vote to approve $300,000 in ARPA funds for a small business grant program and $20,000 in ARPA funds to support public art.
Okay, we have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Marcus?
Yeah. As far as the job incentive program, and I'm just throwing it out there, as far as what made you land on 500 as opposed to, let's say, 1,000 for those two things? And the only reason I'm saying that is because I think about, you know, how amazing it is to get that bonus regardless of what it is, but when I think about rent and other things that's a little bit more pricey and what probably comes into play, was that a consideration, or is 500 just what you started with and you stuck with?
So I came up with the number of 500, actually, after looking at other municipalities, the programs, Salem, Aspen, the city of Boston, as well as Newton, and so that was within the ballpark of what they had been offering.
Okay. Did you see much higher or lower, or was it everything kind of around that number?
It was around that number.
Around that number.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Here and now, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you again for all of your work, and as you can see, we're excited, we've moved it up to a vote tonight, so.
Excellent. Thanks for that.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Thank you.
The appointments and consent agenda at this time.
You may, that's a motion by Mr. Matthews. Is there a second? Any seconds?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Here and now, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next item on the agenda, joint meeting with the planning board, Paul Alpert, chair, and I see that we have some members on Zoom. Adam Block is here in person, come on up. Natasha, Marty, and I believe Lee will be joining us via Zoom. Is that correct?
Good day.
Okay, great. If you just take the microphone, you have them both. Terrific. Welcome. Nice to see both of you, and we'll see if, just give another moment to see if.
Natasha's on the screen.
Let me see Natasha. No, you're fine. You're fine, Adam. We'll just bring over, there's Marty. Hi, Marty. Hi, Natasha. And then if Lee comes on, we'll be moving her over at that time. So you're here to discuss two things before I turn it over to you. One is the potential for a brewery in Needham, and second is a potential tree study and maybe a future tree bylaw. So with those two items, Mr. Alpert?
Oh, I thought you would call this meeting, to be honest.
Okay, well, then why don't I talk? Then that's fine with me. Why don't we go from there? Okay. So the first item is the brewery, and we received in our packet a potential request for change of zoning for a brewery. The requirements, I know, Adam, the CEA has voted to recommend adoption of that, and I guess then I will start with our board. I know Mary and I briefly in a chair, vice chair, had a discussion in support of it. Of course, the devil's in the details, but I think it's something, and looking at the CEA's request or support of it, and it seems like it would be something, I know it's been in other towns, that would be beneficial to the town. So why don't we start off with a board discussion, questions or comments from the board?
Now.
Yes, Dan?
Well, we're on the brewery, starting with the brewery.
Correct.
Chairman, and I've read the report, which basically came from Amy, which is very helpful about the idea of having, the idea that we ought to be able to permit what's generally called brew pubs or farm breweries in the town. Just to kick the discussion off, it would seem to me that in, assuming, and maybe a big assumption, and we would want to check this out at the beginning, if you have it, the main concern of the board from my point of view is, is the applicant, you know, of, you know, for lack of a better term, good character and accept the responsibilities of operating a liquor license in Needham and being a good neighbor, and has the financial, the sufficient financial qualifications and. and other elements, as we would say with a new restaurant in town. That's the piece of this that is the select boards. The rest of it, to me, is really very much a planning function of your committee deciding, is this a good fit in one or other of our districts or in an overlay that would be called out for that purpose? And if so, and I might, my main thoughts would be looking at that just as my opinion for you to consider is, it's talked about the idea, well, this is really almost like an industrial use, so it goes in an industrial location. Well, really, no, it's more, it's a place that produces a product, beer, but it mainly is a restaurant. And to do and to think about how that fits wherever it goes. So for example, when we talked about looking, say, at our industrial areas, the industrial areas that are on the far side of 128 would seem at least logical possible candidates for that. Either what we now refer to the Muzzy area or the area farther down Gould Street, I think, might be a candidate, depending on how your board in dealing with the input from the neighbors, the residential neighborhoods in that area would feel about it. Because certainly you wouldn't want to be doing something like this in a way that would be a problem for the neighbors would perceive as a problem. Other industrial areas, I'm thinking Crescent Road or the Hillside Avenue industrial area aren't basically because of the slopes and that these are not made to have retail traffic going in and out of in large amounts, that I would think that those would not be good areas. And some of the things here seem to, some brew pubs seem to have a focus on outside service. And I know we're doing a lot of that now because of necessity and public health. But in the long run, particularly if people are, as one of these applicants was talking, running trivia nights and such, I'd rather have that be in a great big indoor, safe indoor hall than out where at around 10 o'clock at night, someone that was in earshot might not be amused. That's what I think. But I think it's really primarily a planning board discovery. If you wanted to do this, I think we can coordinate the licensing function as long as it's understood. Yes, we are going to do due diligence on anyone that wants to come and get into the alcohol business in Needham.
Agreed. This would be in the purview of the planning board. It would be a zoning change and the reason for the joint meeting to discuss. And you mentioned what was brought up in the memo, mixu 128, industrial, industrial one, Highland Commercial 128, New England Business Center. Again, just recommended by the memo, but of course, that would be up to the planning board to decide if that would be appropriate. And as you said, we would look at the license and make sure they're qualified. Before I turn it over to your board, let me go through. Marcus?
Yeah. Thank you all for being here. And this packet is great, kind of learning more about what may be coming down the road. So my question is, as far as a need for the town and a want from the town, I think that is something that, you know, Dan hit on a little bit with the residents that may be nearby and, you know, not doing a disservice to them and for causing any more, you know, traffic or things like that that could impact their daily lives. So something to consider. And then what has your kind of pulse been? I know how new this is, but from hearing from town and have you talked to any community members and things like that about this being something the town in Needham is excited for? Is it just such an early part of the process where that hasn't been really done yet?
Paul, have you received any feedback on this?
We haven't really, to be honest, this is the first we've heard of this.
Okay, that's, I just want to be sure.
Nobody has come to the planning board up until you're asking us to appear at this joint meeting.
Sure.
To talk about changing the bylaws to allow a brewery or a brew pub.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but I believe that the Council of Economic Advisers just met on this within the past couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, you know, usually somebody comes to us for an informal discussion. Very often, if there is somebody who is interested in bringing one of these towns, that that might be the person who presents it. It might be Amy because it's something that she's been studying. And so she might make an appointment to to meet with us. So we haven't had an opportunity to even.
Fair enough.
Consider it. Sure. Now, I will just say personally, one of my favorite locations to go out to eat is a brew pub.
Okay.
I love brew pubs.
Well, that's, that's good. That's a good start.
But, but as you pointed out, or no, as Dan pointed out, where in town does it fit?
Right.
And, you know, that's, that's, that's the question. It really is, usually you see them, yes, it's manufacturing, because a large part of what they're doing is doing the brewing, but they're also a restaurant because that's where they draw the people in and make their money and have people actually buy retail. So, you know, it's, now, now we have been promoting as best we can, having restaurants on the Newton side of 128. We'd love to see more restaurants in the New England Business Center, in the mixed use area. And there are a couple of restaurants there. But, you know, we feel that 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 would be a good location. But this is something that, that if, if the Council of Economic Advisers or if somebody who actually wants to bring in a restaurant, or if our town economic development manager wants to bring it to the planning board, I believe this is something that the planning board would be very happy to seriously consider.
Great. Thank you. And the idea, I think, was that we didn't want to get ahead of it as a board and have discussions. And I say, why is the, why is the select board talking about zoning changes? We haven't heard about it yet. So I guess this would be a way to kick it off and just get everyone on the same page. Marcus? Yep. And then Mary Ann, and I see Marty has his hand up.
And so I know Amy, and this, it says fall of 2020, you were contacted by someone, you know, according to this. So I guess how did that conversation go from there? And where is it left off as far as their interests? Or were they just kind of waiting to hear back from us, from us as a town?
Amy?
So in the fall of 2020, I was contacted by a gentleman who was interested in opening a brew pub in Needham. And I checked with our director of planning, Lee Newman, as well as our building commissioner, to see if all of the uses that were being requested for a specific site would fit into any of our zoning. And as it turns out, all those multiple uses on one site are not allowed currently in Needham. So I had to go back to this gentleman and say, thank you so much for your interest in wanting to come to Needham. But right now, we're not set up to be able to allow this use.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. Mary Ann, I don't know if you had a comment?
Thank you. Well, I know that this was something, as Matt said, that we had a discussion about a couple of weeks ago in a chair vice chair. I think, you know, it's interesting. I'm glad to hear that somebody did come and speak with Amy about it. I think it's, this is an area where there are lots of folks in town who do enjoy going to brew pubs. But the fact that it takes infrastructure and zoning and thinking about it for it to be an allowed use, I think means that it's probably worthwhile our discussing whether that makes sense. I think Needham is a town that's known for its restaurants. This is a particular type of restaurant. And within that suite of offerings, I think it would be wonderful if this were another choice that were available for people.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Agreed. Marty?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just start off by mentioning that when Amy was speaking, I don't know whether you were breaking up on your end or I was breaking up on mine, but I really didn't hear her very well. But let me, let me just tell you what I wanted to say. It's very quick. The first thing that the planning board would do, I think, when we pick this up and discuss it, before we even talk about whether there's a zoning change needed, I would want to make sure that we looked at the last paragraph of section 3.1 of our zoning bylaw, which we added not that long ago, I think before Paul and Natasha and Adam were on the board. I think just Jean and I were on the board at the time. We saw that there was always going to be new proposed uses. And instead of always going back to change the bylaw to add another use, a new use, we decided to add a clause, a paragraph at the end of 3.1, that essentially says, if there's a new use that is like in kind and impact another use, whether allowed as of right or by special permit, proposed, an applicant can come before us and tell us what the operation would be like and let us decide if it is like another use that's already allowed in the bylaw, even though it's not a brewery. And then we could just treat it that way. So it's entirely possible that no zoning bylaw change would be required, is all I'm saying.
Great. Thank you for that information, Marty. Amy was speaking that she spoke with, and correct me if I'm wrong, of course, but did speak with Lee Newman, as well as the building commissioner, to get some guidance. That currently it's not allowed under our zoning bylaw that it would need to be looked at. But maybe that's something that can be revisited because that is a good point about that catchall provision of the bylaw. So we may be able to look at that or move ahead if that's not correct with the with the zoning bylaw change. Adam?
Obviously, as Paul was mentioning, the planning board has not had an opportunity to discuss this on its own yet. And hopefully this will, you know, lead to the conversation. I like the idea of the town being proactive. I think that where we have seen in some of the research that Amy has done, has shown that these types of uses are placemaking in town, which I think contributes towards the concept of building a greater sense of community and engagement with one another, which I think is something we've learned from the pandemic has been a huge benefit. I think to Marty's point, we should start the process in the sense of reviewing our zoning to determine if any bylaw change is necessary. We're typically dealing, I think, from my experience in visiting a number of these types of facilities, both in Massachusetts and elsewhere, we're dealing with a multitude of uses. One use is a manufacturing type use for the purposes of manufacturing beer or cider, whatever the case may be. Second is alcohol consumption on site. Third is a retail use to be able to go in and pick up, not consume on site, but take home. Not just the beer, but other merchandise, hats, t-shirts, and other things like that. And then also, to Dan's point, the concept of having a venue for entertainment. So in a number of the very successful facilities, they utilize indoor and outdoor space. COVID has obviously been problematic. And yet, in a number of facilities would have outdoor, significant square footage outdoors, where they may have a bit of a festival-like atmosphere, where there may be a band or two that plays, there'll be a bunch of cornhole boards, some outdoor ping pong boards and so on. It becomes fairly child-friendly. Obviously, kids are not there to consume the alcohol. That's not something that the town would promote or encourage and would obviously prevent. Nevertheless, you know, you can imagine there are families, you know, that would bring their, you know, their kids there and be able to play those large Connect Four games. So entertainment can have a number of different interpretations. I think we'd be very sensitive, Dan, to your point, especially that we would not want to be, we would not want the use to be intrusive of neighbors. And I think to your point as well, part of the process necessarily include some kind of a discussion with the public to gauge feedback. And I don't know to what extent we're able to work with, with our communications officer to, you know, have a poll. I don't know if that's an opportunity that, you know, that we can explore as well. But I think that we can wait to let another applicant come before us, or we can take the bull by the horn and be proactive and devise a program that works best for the town. The only other thought that I have is these uses, we want to be able to make sure that these uses are, multiple uses are available on a lot at once as opposed to just two. And then also, and the function of the use is a function of size or vice versa. The function of size determines the use. So there are some instances where some towns are able to do this in a town center. Instead of having five or six vats that they're brewing or five or six different types of beers that they're brewing at the time, they may only have one or two, you can still consume them on site. And yet, and yet you could have other food service. Some facilities actually are able to promote other, working without collaboration with other local businesses, particularly restaurants, where there's no food service on site. And yet, they, the proprietor of the brewery works proactively and collaboratively with a number of the restaurants in town to encourage takeout. So you can eat on site by supporting other restaurants and businesses in town. That works for a smaller scale operation in a, in a, an urban or a center business type of a district as opposed to larger uses that would require land, as Amy laid out, for, you know, in bigger facilities and industrial districts.
Sure. Great. Thank you. Seems like you know quite a bit about these places, which is a, which is a good thing. No, and I think that's great personal research. I think the first question, we say, take the bull by its horns, I think to be proactive would be beneficial. I don't know if this applicant would still be around. And I think a question I'd have is, as you move forward the process, will it be as of right? I know, you know, in our memo, it said in some towns, it is as of right. Another would be special permit. I think it was special permit. Would address a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing here about, you know, neighborhood and how that would affect the neighborhood and the design and everything else. So that might give you, it would clearly give you more control of the application. Natasha?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, a couple, just a couple of questions. I guess the issues to consider from it said, is this an issue which the town wishes to pursue? And I agree with my colleagues that I think it is a use that the town, you know, it would be beneficial to the town. As Mary Ann mentioned, I think we need to look at, you know, the zoning carefully. There are other, I guess my question is, and I guess the reason for why I'm saying the zoning carefully is based on the residential, I was looking at the zoning map, just there's some residential abutting areas next to some of the areas where it's being recommended to just to just be able to write the bylaw, to be able to be considerate of those areas. The only question that I have here, which I think is interesting, is when it talks about the background or the breweries in Massachusetts, it also discusses food trucks and outside catering companies. So I think that when we review this, we should also think of those items of how that goes along with with this particular use and see if there are opportunities for food trucks or catering companies that are happening on other towns as well. It's very popular and just how would we do that? And also pop-ups. Sometimes people can't afford to have a brick and mortar place, but they do pop-ups. They do this in Boston all the time. And it's really successful and really popular to give more opportunity, especially on the 128 side that doesn't have as much. So I think it's a great idea. And I think I agree with what Marty and Adam just mentioned as well. So looking forward to discussing it further.
Great. Thank you for that. Natasha, just I wanted to make sure that's Marcus?
So agreeing with what Natasha said, I just want to know as far as what anybody else knows about food trucks and things like that. Once it's on their premises, is there a fee or something that they pay to be on there? And is that a fee that in some capacity goes back to the town or to the establishment? And so, you know, making sure that they're profiting off that and they're, we're doing our due diligence to help them. But I just didn't know what that looked like as far as the people that actually purchased this area and do this, how that affects their business for positive or negative or whatever that may be.
I know there's been quite, well, there was quite a discussion on food trucks in the past in our downtown, how that worked and licensing fees. I'm not, Amy, do you know the actual fee for having it or the logistics?
Food truck is on town property. The town would have a fee associated with it. But the venues that I think we're talking about tend to be ones that bring in their own food truck. It's a private relationship between the food truck and the.
So that would.
There'd be no license, some fee for that.
Sometimes there's a fee, sometimes there's a minimum purchase. Sometimes it's just whatever the luck of the night is.
Right. And I think the locations kind of dictate, as Natasha was talking about, if I think it might be beneficial in some areas to have a food truck. And then others, of course, will compete with our brick and mortars, along with the question of pop-ups. But I know all these are issues that we could probably spend a lot of time on tonight. But are there any closing discussion? I think, Natasha? Well, I don't know if your hand's still up. You're fine? Okay. We're fine with Mary Ann? Okay. Thank you. So you heard kind of the sense of the board, and it seems to be the sense of the members present as well. So look forward if we can move ahead on that issue. Now, the second is the tree preservation strategies. We've had a discussion for many years about the best way to come up with some type of tree preservation strategy. We had a working group. I was a part of that. There were members at the time of the planning board that are no longer on the board, they were a part of it, as well as the select board. And I know it's still an issue in town that people want to discuss and try to move ahead with. I know when I was speaking, when I was on that committee, issues kept coming up, you know, you'd think you'd have a solution to something and then something else would come up. So it's very, you know, you kind of have one area where you want to start a fund, and that's maybe a solution on a property. And then the other part is, well, if you just have the fund, then how does that really protect the lot or the neighbors from what they have to see? And then kind of third train of thought is some neighbors, there are some nuisance trees that they actually would like to see removed, and what would be, you know, the department's way of managing this and the workforce. So there's just a lot to it. I think tonight, there was a memo laid out of kind of the next steps that we received as far as, you know, reconstituting the group, making it maybe a part of the climate action committee that we've established, and kind of just getting a sense of your board and this board as well on the appetite to kind of move forward to some type of tree preservation strategy. I know it's been discussed on the planning board, so maybe if I could turn it over, I know you haven't probably seen this recently, Paul, but where you are on this.
But we do have, in this particular case, we do have some history.
Right.
And we do have some, some newer members, both, both Adam and Natasha are new to the board since we discussed this previously, but the planning board has always, well, I shouldn't say always, let me back up. I've been on the planning board for seven years. I think I'm in my seventh year. And in the seven years that I've been on the board, this is something that the planning board has been very much in favor of and has wanted to go forward with it. When I joined the board seven years ago, it was right after the Rockwood Lane project had been, had gotten its special permit. And Rockwood Lane was a development where originally, before anything had even been filed with the planning board, the owner of the property that wound up being the Rockwood Lane subdivision, had clear cut his, his property, which had caused substantial problems for the neighbors who were downhill and downstream from that property. And, and that, that brought the planning board to, to really focus in on having a tree bylaw, which we brought to the select board and, and with the select board, that working group was formed. You know, the devil is in the details, and that's what happened. And so, you know, it hasn't gotten done. Certainly for the three members of the board who were on the board before, I can say, I hope that I can say for the three of us, we have a majority of the board, that yes, we want this to continue to move forward. We would love to see this brought back. And I would hope that Natasha and Adam would agree. I envision, I personally envisioned it by reconstituting the, the tree committee that, that we had before, because a lot, a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of knowledge has already gone into this. And so I think it makes sense to pick it up from, from where it's been left off, rather than moving it to, to a new committee, which would basically be starting from scratch. Because I'd like to see this happen sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I would, I would concur with that. I, you know, I remember from those discussions, we had building commissioners from other town come in, towns come in or send us information. We had arborists from other towns come in and send us information. So there is a lot of work that has been done, and maybe the, the members may change the committee, but there was a lot of bulk work that went in there. I would like to see, I think, as part of anything that we do, I know that we're looking at potentially in the next couple of years, two, three, four years, maybe large parcels being sold off in certain areas of town that, and I think that kind of, if there is a parcel over a certain amount, I don't know what that acreage is, that it almost would get different scrutiny, like you were talking about, Rockwood, where it can be cleared, different scrutiny, and therefore a different level of protection, I think would be, you know, something to look at that we never really got into. Because at the time, it's like, how many large parcels are there? And then we're starting to hear of ones that might be coming up or might be, you know, sold. I remember when we did the Greendale project, that was one of the issues. That was, I don't know, five acres, and, and we were afraid, which they did, just clear all the trees. And that was something we couldn't do anything about because we didn't have a bylaw at the time. So, you know, and I'm agreement that we should probably look to reconstitute that committee, but I'd like to hear from members of this board. Mary Ann?
Thank you, Matt. I, I do think it should be reconstituted. It's long been a goal of mine that we would have a tree bylaw in place. I think it was a committee that started back when I was on the Large House Committee, so it's, it's been around for a long time. It's amazing to me, I remember at the time of the Large House Committee, I felt that builders at that time did not understand the implications of trees for properties and for stormwater. I think the same could be said for homeowners, that they do not understand the relationship between trees and stormwater. So to some extent, I think there's some education across the board. I am amazed, I know, Matt, you told me a story about somebody who was buying a home from you, where you had left some trees, and in fact, they wanted all the trees removed. You know, so, so it happens in so many different ways, because there are people who don't like to rake leaves. So if you just cut everything down, then you won't have any leaves to rake. I think it's all a challenge. At the same time, I do hope that we will have a tree bylaw. I do believe it has an impact on stormwater. I do not see it as work for the climate committee. If it were to be there, it's way down the list. There are much bigger projects that that committee is going to need to undertake that will have a much greater impact on the town than this particular one. So I would hope this would be one that we could just get done. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mary Ann. I agree with that statement as well. Discussion members of the board? Dan?
Yeah, I guess, I think the idea of picking, picking up the work of the committee to go forward is, makes a lot of sense. You want to take advantage of what you already know. One thing, and I'll almost ask a question, and I don't know, and if nobody, there are other towns that are dealing with this issue and others, some that have bylaws, do we, does our, the information we have or what we would update, that includes, I know in particular, we've been appointed to, we've been pointing to the Wellesley bylaw and the system that they use. And I, and, and I guess we could learn something from their experience rather than try to invent the wheel ourselves, and I guess that's the idea of this. The main thing that I see is we really want to encourage people to recognize the role of trees. They take a long time to grow, and therefore, we want to carefully consider when they're being, being removed. On the other hand, there's a balance there of the need for people who are responsible for managing their own property to be able to do that in a reasonable, in a reasonable manner. I don't think the town can micro, can micromanage that. So we have to find the fair balance to that. The, so you had said, the details are, the details are important, Paul. I can, I can, I can respect that. I agree with Mary Ann. This is really, it's kind of a planning and building function in terms of the people that have the necessary expertise on how much limitations you can put on if we're going to use, as the Wellesley system does. It seems to me the Wellesley system requires the property owner or developer to think carefully about what they're going to do. And if they feel that they're allowed effectively to remove trees, in most cases, if that's their plan, but they had to pay a fee that goes into the tree planting, the municipal fund, to put trees up somewhere else. That's not a bad, that's not a bad system, but if you're going to use that, you certainly, and I think the memo calls this out, you want to make sure that your system is operating efficiently. So as much money goes into planting trees as opposed to permitting and inspecting that, to make this thing, to make it, to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. And that might be the best solution, but again, the issue that we had, and I'm going back, is that, that doesn't help the neighbor who's now looking at, you know, a certain building and saying, what happened to the trees? Oh, well, the money's in the fund. But it might be kind of the solution, the best way to, to address the problem. Any other, Marcus?
Yeah, I think everybody hit on it. Kind of picking up where you left off makes sense, and then, you know, making amendments or, you know, updating things as you go probably makes sense as well. Because in the last, you know, four years, I'm sure things have changed and will continue to change. And just to make sure we're as current with, you know, all the information that we have, but starting over doesn't make sense. I think just kind of building upon the good work that's already been done. So echoing everybody else.
Great. Thank you, Marcus.
Being a newer member on the planning board and having not had the, the history and experience that the previous members of the planning board have had, it's certainly something that I would support. I know that there are, based on this memo that I think Katie put together, which is very thorough and helpful, and I think some other discussions we've had, that it's, the details are complicated. You're dealing with, you know, I like the idea of developing different standards for different sized lots, and then also different standards for the condition of certain trees. So some trees can be invasive species, that's a real problem, and it may be helpful to actually remove those and yet replace with a different type of a tree that has a more positive impact on the land, in addition to contributing towards a fund. And maybe there's a different scale of contribution towards the fund. And obviously, the purpose of that fund is to be able to, I think, you know, pay for the cost of enforcement, which is probably not so inexpensive. But there is certainly, you know, I, on one property that a client of mine had, it made an entirely, it made sense to remove a number of the trees because they were so invasive. And other trees that were not invasive, that would ordinarily make a positive impact on the composition of the land, were diseased. And so there are certain types of trees that we would prefer to see on our land, and yet if they're diseased, it makes a lot of sense to actually, you know, to remove them because they become destructive, you know, to the, to the land. And in some cases, you know, it has a damaging impact on the ability for lawn to grow and for other landscape features to, to grow as well. So it's a complicated thing, but that complication should not stop us from finding a way forward and overcoming these challenges and, and making a positive contribution to the next generation in town.
You're not, you sound so knowledgeable. You're not volunteering yet, right?
Sign me up.
You heard, put that in the minutes. No. Thank you for those comments. Adam, anything from Natasha or Marty before we close?
I just want to.
Oh, Natasha, and then I'll. I'm sorry. No, if Natasha has something to say, please, I'm going to go first.
I just wanted to say, I don't, I think it would be great to get all the information or have access to the information that's already been done. We shouldn't reinvent the wheel. We should also see if there were, if there are new things that have happened since that was done, or new from other towns, just to see if, just environmentally, there, you know, have been other initiatives that have happened since then. But we should definitely shouldn't, shouldn't reinvent the wheel, and it would be great to go through it. And, and I don't know enough about it, so I can't comment much at this moment, but it would, I'm looking forward to, to seeing what was said. And I, and I support being thoughtful about which trees we keep in town, but also realistic for homeowners and others, and how it impacts them as well.
Great. Thank you for that, Natasha. Paul, closing comments?
Yeah. I really don't want to delve too far into the details, but I'm just going to go by my, my recollection, because I do, I do remember reviewing the, the latest draft of the bylaw and the regulations that the committee had put together. And the planning board had, had looked at this independently before the committee got Wellesley has a very good bylaw that we pretty much used as the template. I would like the committee to go back, though, because I know Newton has a very extensive bylaw. I believe Lexington has a bylaw.
They do.
That was worth looking at also, and, and maybe going back and see whether those have been changed over the past few years and, you know, putting, trying to get the best from, from what's, what's available that, that the other cities and towns have done. I just want to stress that we should be promoting the preservation of healthy trees, maybe healthy, non-invasive trees on land. We don't, from my point of view, I'm speaking personally here, not for the board, I don't want to make the fund so easy to use that it's worth it to a developer to just say, I'll contribute to the fund, it's a cost of doing business, I can pass it through to the ultimate homeowner, and, and I'll take down all the trees. I, I, I want the, the contribution to the fund to be something that is really only, only if the developer can preserve sufficient trees to keep some, some old growth in town. I mean, you know, I've seen, I've seen a lot of houses where there's been, there's been tear downs, the developer has gone in, has clear cut the land, and then they've put in beautiful, beautiful landscaping ultimately, but it's not old growth. And there's something to be said for maintaining the old growth. Now, granted, I live on Pine Street, which is surrounded by old growth. You know, we bought a rich hill. We've got, it's, it's a neighborhood of old growth trees, but, you know, it's, it's, it's something for the town to, to have as a goal.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, Adam. Thank you, members, for coming in. It's nice to have a joint meeting and catch up, and we'll, action items for those two issues. So have a great night.
And thank you for inviting us.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving. Yes.
I just wanted to throw something out, not, not an additional issue, because we've listed what we've done, but it is, as the chairman said, it's great to have, have your board here, and because there are so many areas where the planners and the select board had to work together, and the public doesn't necessarily know who's in charge of what. And we're routinely being asked or told, we should, that you should do this or that, or you should tell that, when we say, well, that's the planner's job. Well, you should tell the planners to do this or that. So we don't want to be in that role. And maybe if we get to have, periodically get together, and it's a two-way street. If you have concerns about initiatives that we're working on, or things that ought to be brought to our attention, then we want to hear about it.
Great. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Amy, thank you. Katie, thank you. Next item on the agenda, town manager, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items, some good news items. We were notified recently that our Amity Path was, received a merit award from the Rhode Island chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects. They were, this was submitted by Beta, the design firm on the project, and the, the award was just very excited about the inclusivity of the path and also the, the amenities for children, so that children and adults could use that path. So there's going to be an award ceremony, maybe we can get that press release out.
Nice. Interstate recognition, right?
Yes. I'm not sure why Rhode Island.
Right. But hey, we'll, we'll take it.
And we'll find out.
Right.
Building on what you said, Mr. Chair, just to let people know that, as you said, the governor, the lieutenant governor, Secretary Kenealy from Housing and Education, economic, sorry, Housing and Economic Development, and also John Hurst, who's the, the director of the Retailers Association of Massachusetts, we're all here promoting Shop Local, Small Business Saturday, and also I did hear a clip on public radio this morning of John Hurst, his presentation about what estimate of growth in retail sales. They did pick Needham Music, which has been in business in that location for 27 years, and Michaelson Shoes, which, as you know, is, I think, approaching, was 100, 100, you know? More than 100, because we recognized. We got our shoes on. So it was, it was very. So it was, it was very interesting to see them in town and to see how they picked local businesses. Just a reminder, the Blue Tree Lighting will be in person, rain or shine, on December 4th, 5:00 p.m. And to remind everybody, Election Day, December 7th, get out and vote. Those are my items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fitzpatrick. That's, those are two, two great things, you know, that, that award's great, and of course, that visit was terrific as well. And as far as the agenda for that, the Blue Tree Lighting, that will be online as far as the time and everything else, what's going on. That's always a fun time, and we will be there.
We will be promoting it heavily.
We'll be promoting it heavily, and I think heavily, and I think I'm going to emcee that event. I was asked to do that, so that alone is worth the price to go, I'm just telling you. Some surprises maybe. No. In all seriousness, thank you. Board Discussion Committee reports, any, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Marcus?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that is unanimous. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.